How do you get out of this email?
One minute.
Trying to get rid of this email.
Go from the bottom.
But I want that, I want that.
Oh.
Kind of unmaximize it.
Just say done, because you're in the middle of a key.
It's awesome.
That's very visually beautiful.
We're going to make it light.
Oh, yeah, right there.
Blue, unbelievable.
You can change that, too.
Well, I'll be changing. Oh.
Is it new for you?
I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Dan Healy, and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
I'm here.
Alderman Clea.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here.
Alderman Como.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. Alderman Clemmons had a family matter to attend to, and Alderman Moran didn't tell me why he wouldn't be here, just said he wouldn't be here. Okay. Also with us this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Well, first, I wanted to report that S&amp;P reiterated, reaffirmed, the city's AAA bond rating. This is really good news, is a testament to the strong management and financial controls that CFO Griffin and his finance team have put in place. But what they cite specifically, and a number of things, but they talk about prudent budgeting practices, which include conservative revenue and expenditure assumptions and consistent budget monitoring. They also cite that in fiscal '22, Nashua recorded its seventh consecutive surplus supported by lower-than-budget expenditures and stronger revenues, especially from motor vehicles and other fees and fines. And they cite that the city has a very strong cash position and strong cash reserves. And in addition to that, I mean, we definitely got credit for the fact that the economy is strong here. They say that the Nashville Center for the Arts, together with a riverfront development plan, which I will mention in a minute, should spur further economic activity in Nashua's downtown. They cite the fact that BAE is the city's largest employer, is planning a significant expansion, which could increase even further, it says, if BAE receives additional funding under the federal government's CHIPS and Science Act. And that I will mention when I mention the escrows. So this is a credit to, again, our finance team, but also all of you for helping with sound budgeting. Is, I think, we should be proud to be part of a city that has a AAA bond rating from two different agencies. This is very rare, and I just, we just need to keep up the good work, I believe. Number two, I wanted, the Nashville, the New Hampshire Community Power has reported to us that they believe that Nashville consumers, Nashville consumers have saved $2.8 million since April as a result of our decision to move into community power. And of course, you know, this is because the city purchases energy for our consumers as opposed to Eversource. Eversource continues to deliver, to distribute, get paid for all of its activities. But the one area where the Nashville Community Power undertakes the work is to buy the actual power. And so far, in two different periods of time, first April through August and then September forward, the price that Nashville Community Power has been able to secure power at undercuts the Eversource rate. Eversource does not produce, Eversource buys power itself, it doesn't produce any. And therefore, $2.8 million in savings have been realized, and this goes to the bottom line of our residents' family budgets every month. So that certainly is good news. We have escrows on tonight. These were reviewed by the Budget Committee, and it were unanimously recommended, but, and there's a little bit of detail to it, but the, this comes from unexpendanted revenues, areas where the city did not, where various departments did not fully, well, save money and did not spend everything in the budget. But the principal purposes for which the escrows are directed are basically the police and fire departments for facilities, and in the case of the fire department, for a facility study, and in the police department, there's also some IT improvements that are being made, which they feel are very necessary. And there's a significant amount, $500,000, going to school maintenance projects. When, this came up before the Budget Committee, Sean Smith was asked, Sean Smith from the School Department was asked, you know, what is your backlog? And his answer was $15 million, so, of projects that he has on his list. So this will make some, some progress towards that. Alderman Dowd often points out that we have at least a billion dollars' worth of school buildings in the city, and so $500,000 to maintain their shape is certainly not an excessive amount of money. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention a really good event that happened today, and some of the members of the board were able to attend. We had the groundbreaking for the first segment of the riverfront development project, which Standard and Poor's referred to, S&amp;P referred to. This was the ramp that will make the Cotton Transfer Bridge fully handicap accessible, so people with disabilities will be able to enter the bridge and leave the bridge from either end. Right now, the south end is able to accommodate with a ramp people with disabilities. But the river was really beautiful, you can see, like, what a wonderful body of water it is. What we have coming and going out to bid soon, everything has been designed, and will be put, this will be put out to bid soon, but we have expanded walkways, lighting, docking, an expanded riverfront park, and in the end, and suspended walkways around all four corners of the, of the Main Street Bridge. And in the end, we will have a project, a riverfront that people really want to visit, I believe, and will be an incredible enhancement to the downtown and to the city as a whole. And just returning, Madam President, for a moment to the escrows, the thing I left out there is that there is $200,000 to serve as match for the $35 million chip grant, which BAE is seeking. That is a necessary part of the grant, a local match, a local contribution. They, BAE, are optimistic that they can get this money, and $35 million would come from the federal government, but they also would put in a lot of money there. And many of us toured their chip facility down in the south end, and they would upgrade all of their equipment, add employees, and just remain a cutting-edge, competitive, high-tech defense and civilian economy manufacturer. So that obviously is a wise expenditure of money, in my opinion. In any event, it was a great day on the riverfront, the weather was great, and it's just nice to get that project started. And with that, Madam President, I will conclude.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of Mayor. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the work on community, National Community Power. I mean, that's great savings, you know, a couple of things there. One being that, you know, we can't always get the tax rate down as low as we want to, but when we're saving money other places instead, that certainly helps the taxpayer. On the other piece is, I don't think we're saving enough, because I think people are still, some of them are still on suppliers, third-party suppliers, which didn't automatically go over to National Community Power. I was walking the neighborhoods the other day, and I met one man, we were talking about taxes, and I went in and asked him about National Community Power, and he said that, no, I was still a third-party supplier, he was a little wary of what it was, and so I explained it to him, and he's like, I gotta get on that, so I told him how to do it. So I just think there's people that either haven't heard about it, don't know about it, I mean, there's no newspaper really anymore, so I think there's more people out there that could go on it, and we could save even more for the taxpayers, so, thank you.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Alderman meetings of October 10th, 2023, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural acts and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Durfee, Planning Manager, regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed ordinance O-23-059, amending the Land Use Code Notice Provisions Table in the Historic District Commission.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. We have one person who has signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. First, I'd like to address the escrow money. I came out for the hearing, and I talked about the large number of escrow accounts we have in this city, and I think it would be prudent for the board, when you look at creating these escrow accounts with extra money that you're doing yearly, to get a report from the city on all of the escrow accounts and take a look at them. I think there's a lot of overlap, there's a lot of overlap in building, parks and rec, and I think that it should be consolidated, and I think it should be cleaned up, because those escrow accounts do put a burden on the finance office to maintain all of them. So I think it would be good for everyone to just know that. When it comes, let's see, the other thing I wanted to address was the cybersecurity money and the transfer of money. I'm hoping and wondering if there's a way that a citizen can track the spending that's been done on that, like, if I put an information request in or didn't have to for a change, if I could say what was spent so far, and I could get an answer for that. And I'd like to think that we have that ability with our projects, and I'm concerned with some of them that we don't, and things that happen. And the third item is going to be the ordinance that has to do with amending the Land Use Code Notice Provision Table. I don't know exactly what this applies to, but I'm hoping at some point the board will address some of these noticing provision, land use code, for parcels that have maintained a code that allow them not to require noticing, but they're in very residential areas, like what happened to that condo development over by an HTI, where the crematorium is going in, right next to it. So it's a whole lot of people and families, tightly packed, very middle income, they're not going to be able to move, and a ranch sold right on the end, and the ranch was zoned for the type of zoning that didn't require a public hearing, and it was bought by a funeral home to do a crematorium. So, you know, 50 feet out, people's doors will be this crematorium, because it was allowed to go in. And by the time that people knew it, it was too late. And I think we should look at some of those areas and carefully consider whether we need to change them, and we should do it also with our downtown improvement plan in some of the areas as well, because there's a lot of residential now going in, that's what we're building. Thanks.
Communications requiring final approval?
None.
Petitions?
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October 4th, 2023 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the October 4th, 2023 Special Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of R-23-157, relative to the acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $1,054,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community service grant activities.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to recommend final passage of R-23-157.
Would you like to move for final passage?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Still in committee mode. Do, you have to do a roll call, right? Okay.
No. You've heard the motion for final passage, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, resolution 23-157 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-158, relative to the acceptance of $331,539 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, President Wilshire, I'd like to move for final passage of R-23-157.
Motion is for final passage, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and resolution 23-158 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-159, relative to the acceptance of $110,000 from the United States Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance into police grant activity fiscal year 2024, hazardous device unit equipment grants.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President, I move for final passage of R-23-159.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and resolution 23-159 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-160, relative to the transfer of $150,000 from the Department Number 194, contingency account number 70125, contingency cybersecurity into various accounts in Department Number 122, information technology in Department Number 191, education.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-160.
Motion is for final passage, is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and resolution 23-160 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-161, relative to the acceptance of additional grant funds pursuant to Contract Amendment Number 4 of the fiscal year 2024, infectious disease contract in the amount of $10,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services for the purchase of vaccines.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President, I motion for final passage of R-23-161.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and resolution 23-161 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-23-162, amended relative to the reappropriation of fiscal year 2024 escrows.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion to amend R-23-162 by replacing it with a golden-rod copy of amendments made at the Budget Review Committee by a roll call, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
On the list of changes, the line one was reduced by $25,000, a line two was added to fund the cost of tree removal of $25,000, the same amount, total amount is, it was the same at $1,815,000.
Motion is to amend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Roll call.
Sorry, Madam President.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yay.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yay.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-162, as amended by a roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
Heard the motion, further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Como.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yay.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Thirteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and resolution 23-162 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-23-167, approving the city's participation in the New Hampshire Public Works Mutual Aid Program and authorizing the related mutual aid and assistance agreement.
Alderman Kamal.
Thank you, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-23-167, I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Kamal.
So this came before the Finance Committee recently, we got a good presentation from Department of Public Works and the Office of Emergency Management. I think this is pretty much a no-brainer, it makes absolute sense for us to be able to solicit mutual aid from surrounding communities for when, not if, we end up needing them. And not only that, I think that it speaks to the good work and the professionalism of all of our departments, that the surrounding communities would want to be able to seek our mutual aid in turn. So I think the agreement makes total sense, and I look forward to its passage. Thank you.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President, I want to add to the perfect verbiage over there, but one of the things that was also pointed out was that if the last storms that we had gotten were much worse and had actually come as we're predicted, we would have been in a whole lot of hurt. So the sooner we get something like this into place, the better off we are, so, and I agree that it speaks to volumes as to them needing us and us needing them. We are a very large community outside of even Nashua and New Hampshire, so, thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, I don't know how many members of the board know this, but being the state rep up in Concord, we did vote, and it was approved, that our Public Works Department is part of the first responder program, and that includes police, firefighters, EMS, and now rightfully so, Public Works. So this seems to fit hand in glove to work along with this and fully support it, thank you.
Motion is for final passage, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and resolution 23-167 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of O-23-059, amending the Land Use Code Notice Provisions Table in the Historic District Commission Review Procedure.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President, I motion to, for final passage of O-23-059.
Motion is for final passage, discussion. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So I cannot support this ordinance, and let me give you my reasons. What this ordinance does is several things. The first thing is that it eliminates the necessity to publish in a newspaper of general circulation notice of applications to, before the Historic District Commission. And I'd like to just remind people that, you know, I'm reading from the ordinances regarding historic districts, purpose and findings. This article contemplates that the future of the city will be enhanced by recognizing and strengthening the city's heritage. The preservation of structures and places of historic and architectural value is hereby declared to be a public purpose. This section preserves districts in the city that reflect elements of its cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history, conserves property values in such districts, fosters civic beauty, strengthens the local economy, and promotes the use of historic districts for the education, pleasure, and welfare of the citizens of the city. The city hereby finds that the loss of historic or architecturally significant structures through demolition, alteration, moving, or incompatible new construction contributes to the destruction of the unique character of the city. I read that just to remind us that the historic district is not just a concern of the people who live in the historic district or the people in that general neighborhood, it concerns and is valued by the entire city, everybody in the city. And what this ordinance does, the first thing it does is it eliminates the publication in a local newspaper, a newspaper of general circulation, of a notice that the historic district is being asked to approve something that's going to affect that district. So, you know, a lot of people get their notice of these things by looking, you know, at the local newspaper, the Nashua Telegraph. And, you know, I know that, you know, that some of us have, you know, pointed out that the Telegraph isn't what it used to be, that it, and we regret that, but the fact is, there are still over 8,000 people who receive the Telegraph on a weekly basis, the actual newspaper. There are over 100,000 who view it electronically. So when you think about those 8,000 newspapers that are delivered, you know, how many people are looking at that newspaper? You know, it could be zero, I don't think it's zero, but it also could be the 8,000 homes, but, you know, the homes are occupied by more than one person usually. So, you know, the number of people that are able to get notice through the Telegraph are, you know, are a substantial number. Now, during the presentation, during the committee meeting, you know, the reason that was given to the committee members and those of us who were there were that the Telegraph, you know, just doesn't reach as many people as it used to, and it's become more expensive. I value, you know, the notice that's given to our citizens about what we're doing. I don't know about you people, but I'm constantly being, you know, told by my constituents and other people in the city that they oftentimes have no idea what's going on. I've heard that complaint voiced about things that happened before the zoning board and the planning board, you know, the people were just unaware that something was going before them. They complain, you know, about, you know, otherwise being unaware, and, you know, so maybe the newspaper isn't reaching as many people as it used to, but it's reaching a lot of people, and I don't think that we ought to be removing it from that, one of the vehicles that we have to notify the citizens about what is going on. You know, in this case, in this particular instance, it regards the historic district. And during the presentation, it was said that signs are a more effective way, those little signs that you see... Thank you. So I cannot support this ordinance, and let me give you my reasons. The, what this ordinance does is several things. The first thing is that it eliminates the necessity to publish in a newspaper of general circulation notice of applications to, before the Historic District Commission. And I'd like to just remind people that, you know, I'm reading from the ordinances regarding historic districts, purpose and findings. This article contemplates that the future of the city will be enhanced by recognizing and strengthening the city's heritage. The preservation of structures and places of historic and architectural value is hereby declared to be a public purpose. This section preserves districts in the city that reflect elements of its cultural, social, economic, political, and architectural history, conserves property values in such districts, fosters civic beauty, strengthens the local economy, and promotes the use of historic districts for the education, pleasure, and welfare of the citizens of the city. The city hereby finds that the loss of historic or architecturally significant structures through demolition, alteration, moving, or incompatible new construction contributes to the destruction of the unique character of the city. I read that just to remind us that the historic district is not just a concern of the people who live in the historic district or the people in that general neighborhood. It's, it concerns and is valued by the entire city, everybody in the city. And what this ordinance does, the first thing it does is it eliminates the publication in a local newspaper, a newspaper of general circulation, of a notice that the historic district is being asked to approve something that's going to affect that district. So, so, you know, a lot of people get their, their notice of these things by looking, you know, at the local newspaper, the Nashua Telegraph. And, you know, I know that, you know, that some of us have, have, you know, pointed out that the Telegraph isn't what it used to be, that it, and we regret that. But the fact is, there are still over eight thousand people who receive the Telegraph on a weekly basis, the actual newspaper. There are over a hundred thousand who view it electronically. So when you think about those eight thousand newspapers that are delivered, you know, how many people, you know, are, are, are looking at that newspaper? You know, it could be zero. I don't think that's zero, but, but it also could be the eight thousand homes, but, you know, the homes are occupied by more than one person usually. So, you know, the number of people that are able to get notice through the Telegraph are, you know, are a substantial number. Now during the presentation, during the committee meeting, you know, the reason that was given to, to the committee members and those of us who were there were that, that the Telegraph, you know, just doesn't reach as many people as it used to, and it's become more expensive. You know, I, I value, you know, the, the notice that's given to our citizens about what we're doing. I don't know about you people, but I'm constantly being, you know, told by, by my constituents and other people in the city that they oftentimes have no idea what's going on. I've heard that complaint voiced about things that happened before the zoning board and the planning board. You know, the people were just unaware that something was, was going before them. They're, they complain, you know, about, you know, otherwise being unaware. And, you know, so maybe the newspaper isn't reaching as many people as it used to, but it's reaching a lot of people. And I don't think that we ought to be removing it from that, one of the vehicles that we have to notify the citizens about what is going on. You know, in this case, in this particular instance, it's, it regards the historic district. And during the, the presentation, it was said that, that signs are a more effective way, those little signs that you see notifying people of a change that's being proposed. And the, the planning department says they've had, you know, positive feedback from the use of those signs. But, you know, I wonder how many, you know, do those signs reach eight thousand people or a hundred thousand people? I doubt it, but I don't really know. But the thing about the signs is that, you know, unless you're driving by or walking by, you know, the location where this is going to be affected, you're not going to know. So people that live in other parts of the city would, you know, would not be alerted to this change by that little sign. So that's, you know, that's, you know, one of the reasons that I oppose this, this ordinance. The other thing that this ordinance does is that it reduces the number of days for which those signs have to be up. Now, it's, there are several instances, including the historic district, where the signs have to be up for ten, a minimum of ten days. And there are, I think, four or five other situations where those signs have to be up for ten days. And this ordinance is going to reduce that to five days. And I just don't think that's enough time. You know, by the time people, if they, if they go by, if they drive by and see the sign, they've, they've either got a, you know, the sign just alerts you that something's going on. To find out what is actually going on, you're gonna, you have to get out of the car, go up to the sign and read it, because it's a little, it's a small notice. You know, or call the planning department, ask them what, what's going on, you know, or go online, do some research. And, you know, it was pointed out by one of the Aldermen who's on the planning committee that if you, if you want to submit something in writing, you've got to do it by a certain deadline. So, you know, when you, when you think of the five days, you know, the amount of time, you know, do you, you get to see the sign, you find, you figure out what it's talking about, you, you do some research, you formulate what you want to say, you know, I just don't think it's enough time. I think ten days is a small amount of time. But to reducing it from the ten days, I, I, I just think is a big mistake. The planning department said that the reason they're looking for that is because, number one, it's the, the state law in, in a lot of these instances only requires a minimum of five days. And we've had more than that. And I, I don't think that's a bad thing. I think we ought to provide as much notice as we can to the citizens. And the other reason they gave was that the applicant, the people, you know, seeking, you know, a change in historic district, you know, or a site plan review, a variance, special exception, conditional use permit, those people are on tight schedules. And, you know, by the time their, the meeting is scheduled and they're alerted to it, they have to come up and pick up their signs. And getting it up ten days before the meeting can be a problem. You know, I would rather, you know, rather than giving up the notice to, to the citizens, I would rather, you know, change the schedule so that you, you allow, you schedule the meeting far enough out so the people have the time to put the signs up and provide the ten days. So, so that's, that's another reason that I'm opposed to this, to this ordinance. And, you know, you know, I, I tried, I, I made some of these points to the committee and the, the committee recommended passage unanimously for, you know, the committee members that were there. But I'm hoping that the members of the committee who voted for this might have a second thought about it, and I'm hoping the rest of you would support me in, in opposing this ordinance. I, I really feel strongly that we ought to be giving our citizens more notice, not less. And that, that's what this ordinance does. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I was at that, that same meeting, and I have to agree with what the Alderman from Ward Five has, has said. I commented that many of my constituents like the signs, because they say they'll walk by it and they see it. But we're coming into more foul weather of snow. We've always had some rain and so on. I do have anxiety about lessening this. As a person who is on the, the planning board and on the Historic District Commission, I hear people come in and I hear about all the delays and so on. So I, I do have some sympathy as far as that's concerned. And if they could shorten these days, they could get them into the committees and so on. But my concern is also for the public. If, you know, there, there is a, a property that's, that's going to be having some work done in the historic district that could affect my property values and so on, I, I would want to know that. I would want enough time to be able to, to do this. So I don't think that I can support this. I, I want to hear what other people have to say. I don't have an issue with it not being in the newspaper, because I, I think that signage and, and maybe some other do. It was a significant amount of money that was going to be saved. And we keep trying to save the taxpayers' money. But then we have to weigh it. Are we saving the taxpayers' money to what extent? Are we doing it on the backs of those that, that reside around there? So I, I think we, we need to really think about this. I, I do have some concerns about it. I respect those that have brought it forward. But the more I look at it, the more kind of angst that I, I have towards, towards some of this. So I don't really believe that I can support it either for, for most of the reasons that the Alderman from Board Five had brought up and so on. So thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I'm going to support it based nothing more than on practicality. Yeah, I do have a waxing nostalgic and do wish the Telegraph was printed daily. I like the tactile feel of sitting there at my kitchen table in the morning with the newspaper. But you know something, folks? It ain't happening anymore. And unless somebody here or in the audience or in the city wants to start a periodical, I don't see it happening again, unfortunately. But it is a lot of money to publish it. And this is, has really truly nothing with the architectural needs of the Historic Commission. It's basically just trying to get the information out there. And if we use all, the Ward Five Aldermen's numbers, and my numbers, you know, of eight thousand people read the Telegraph, it must be online, or the one paper that they do publish, which is Sunday, of eight thousand people, it's basically only twelve percent of the population. Is that worth, worth the cost involved? Now, they're not going to start putting up the signs where people can see them. And, you know, when it comes down to who's really affected, are you really affected a critical if you live six streets away? Or are you affected if you're within that street? And the thing is, if you live on that street and they come and post, we all seen it, they look like a political sign, then basically the people that really should be notified would be notified, you know, and then express it. Maybe there might be some way we can get it on our website. But there's a lot of things that have fallen through the cracks in different meetings. I wish the Telegraph existed. It would stop some of the, the bull crap that is really going on, of which is the fact and which is the lie. You know, I have no smoke and mirrors in this, in my pockets. And I wish there was a periodical, but it doesn't exist. So I think we better come, and even though it's waxing nostalgic, accept what we are left with in the modern era. Thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you very much. I, so I sponsored this, and, and my colleague from Ward Five makes a compelling argument, and I'm, I'm thinking about joining him in the no column. I, I watched the meeting, because I sponsored the legislation, and I wanted to know a little bit more about it. As I watched the meeting, what I didn't hear, and I, and I, and I saw Mr. Durfee out in the audience tonight, and perhaps we could invite him up, because the one question that I had was what problem are we trying to solve, or what goal are we trying to achieve by passing this? And I was hoping we could ask him and he could answer that.
You all set? Mr. Durfee?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your question, Alderman Sullivan. So this, this ordinance is really trying to address four key things. So besides the Telegraph, which is one, and, and I will put a number to that, we're looking at costs in excess of ten thousand dollars a year for notification requirements. The table itself, if you look at it, there are a number of references to state statutes. Some of these have, have changed or were originally inaccurate when this table was first drafted. So we are looking to correct those, bring everything into compliance from a reference standpoint. So that is point one. Point two, I would say, is that we're, we're making sure that this table matches our, our practices as well as those that are required by, by state statute. And what we found in our review of this table was that there were a number of requirements from state statute that were not on this table. We were practicing them, because we, we stay up to date on, on things that change at the, up in Concord, but they were not on this table. So we are making sure that this reflects statutory requirements. But from a practicality standpoint, we, we have a lot of land use boards. And we, with our planning board and our zoning board, they, they meet twice a month, most months. We, we have a cycle that we have to maintain to be effective, to make sure that things get posted on agendas, and certainly to, to ensure that the public receives due notice of all applications. And with, with the timing, when we generate our notices, we work with other departments to see if applications are ready to go to boards. Sometimes we don't have that information until the day the notice has to go out. So if we're waiting to, one, get something into the Telegraph, which their deadline is the day before that we typically know, we're either guessing, hoping, really bugging other departments to know if this one application can go forward to a board. So what we're trying to do is make sure that our notice requirements really work with our cycle, so that we can make sure that we can meet our obligations that we set for ourselves, which I will state that everything on this table as proposed is in compliance with state statute, and in fact, in a number of places, goes above and beyond the statutory requirements. Signage is not required by state statute. That's something that, that the city has affirmatively elected to do, to provide notice. And I think it is a highly effective means of notification, because it is right there, present in the neighborhood. If you are walking around, driving around, you will see it. We often hear a lot about, oh, I, I didn't receive a mailer. Mailing goes out to direct abutters. However, you could be ten feet away and still not be a direct abutter, just how the lot lines fall. So signage is a way to kind of cover that, that gap in a way. So again, with, with cycling, with, with notifications, with the generation of agendas and notices, we've run into issues in the past. As Alderman Jettie had mentioned, we, we do need to work with our developers and our applicants to ensure that they are able to pick up the signs in a time that is consistent with the requirements that we set out. We would hate for, you know, someone can't make it because they're on vacation, or they have a conflict or whatever, they can't pick up their sign, and then they are not in compliance with our notification requirements set forth in this table. A, a third reason for this is we're, we're establishing consistency across all of our land use boards. The table would, would have, you know, ten days here, five days here for the, for the same action, but for different land use boards. We're, we're hiring new staff who will be part of this. And it was, when I first saw the, the table, I was a little confused of why do we have these different timeframes for different applications for the same board, when state statute is pretty clear. It's all, it's all pretty steady and similar across the different boards. So we're looking to add some consistency, just to make it easier for us, but also to comply with, with state statute. And then, of course, fourth, the cost associated with, with publishing in the newspaper. We do publish online, so I will state that state statute was recently changed to allow planning boards and historic district commissions to not be required to post in the newspaper, provided this notice is provided on the city webpage, which it is. We've been doing that for a long time. So we will continue to do that. And some great feedback at the committee meeting about advertising our agendas on community television, which I have reached out and we're working to, to figure out a way to do that, so that we have another means of notifying the public.
You all set? Alderman Sullivan?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Cle. Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, wait. I meant to call on Alderman Lopez first.
Okay, sure.
So doing some Navcan math, if we're spending, well, if there's eight thousand readers, and that's over fifty-two weeks, that, you know, there's a weekly periodical, it comes out to something like forty-one or four-hundred-and-ten thousand different opportunities for somebody to see this, and then you divide that by the ten thousand people, that comes out to about forty-one dollars a, an opportunity that we would be paying. So I'd prefer to save the money, and I'd prefer that we not be spending or investing in a periodical particularly that only has, you know, limited viewership and limited exposure. I disagree with my colleagues that there's only that one periodical. I mean, the Nashua Hippo is a little less often out, but may have more viewers. And there are other periodicals in this area. The Union Leader and the Boston Globe are most likely what you're going to see in a diner. So using those is not impossible and not ridiculous. I don't know that we have necessarily done enough research to conclude that there's no other place that we could do it, so I would be hesitant to remove any plans or strategies to do that. That being said, I don't know if that has to be enforceable by ordinance. And I feel like a study of that particular nature, just to yield what is, every industry assessment says is a diminishing return in, with regards to print news, and is something that even the Telegraph itself has concluded, like, okay, this is no longer the future. I don't know if that's cost-effective. So I think the ordinance amending that so that it is removed is a good aspect of it. I do have a problem with not necessarily mandating other forms of it. As was discussed, I was the one who pointed out community television. That's something we operate. So any publications or, you know, media outlets that the city has, we should be using this. There probably should be a city planning board or whichever appropriate, like, title, would, would have Facebook, or Nextdoor, or Instagram. And I think we need to do a better job of that, because we talk a lot about the, around the horseshoe here. It's unfortunate the Telegraph is leaving. It's unfortunate we don't have a periodical. People are frustrated that they don't get enough news. We just need to be more nimble. We need to learn how to reach out to people using modern electronics and modern capabilities. So I am very much on the fences whether I'll support this, only because I think we should codify some other mechanism, or at least that there should be another mechanism to outreach people. And we shouldn't just throw in the hat and say, well, the minimum standard is no longer doing it to newspaper. We want to streamline everything by bringing everything down to the minimum standard, instead of the quality that the city of Nashua and the people of Nashua are used to. We have talked several times about how useful signs are and how visible they are to everybody. They're not visible to everybody. I can't see signs. When I walk up to a sign, I have to literally kneel down and stick my face on it, because I have yet to see a large print sign, really. So I would say there's probably other residents who are in similar situations. There are probably residents who have mobility issues too, who aren't going out and walking around their neighborhoods necessarily. And they deserve to know what's going on, you know, in their neighborhood before it's right in front of them. I think that is a solvable problem, just because I can't read a, a, a planning sign and, without walking up to it and maybe like walking over bushes, branches, through a ditch, whatever. I'm thinking of a specific one over on Fairmont Street, which is really awkward to read. Just because I can't read that doesn't mean I don't hear about it, because other residents hear about it. So I think the goal shouldn't necessarily be to pay such a number that we hit every single person we can find, but we should figure out how to reach enough residents that residents are starting to feel like they know what's going on in their community, and they know what's happening. I don't see this ordinance doing that. I think mostly it just scales back the expectations. And while I do trust the department under this administration, and I do trust that they are trying administration and I do trust that they are trying to make, get word out and, and raise awareness of things in the community to avoid those kind of awkward frictions that happens when neighbors don't know something's going on, I don't necessarily know that every future administration is going to be quite as attentive or is going to make it a priority to staff departments in a manner that they can be. So I would be reluctant to remove the newspaper without replacing it with other requirements to, to raise awareness. And then finally, I agree with my colleagues that have pointed out that the timeframe for turnaround before beatings, putting signs out, we need to be monitoring that and that needs to be much, much longer than it is. Even 15 days or two weeks would be more appropriate, in my opinion.
Alderman Clea?
Thank you again, Madam President. Truthfully, the, the loss of the, of the newspaper isn't what concerns me as much as the five days of the, of the signage and so on because of weather and so on. I will say though, in favor of the signs going up, I do get phone calls, can you tell me what's happening over at XYZ? The historic district is Ward Three, so it's going to affect my constituents a lot. It's going to affect the abutting neighbors. I think our planning department does a phenomenal job in getting notifications out there. And I do have a community that, that is very active and they might drive by and just see the sign, not necessarily have to stop and, and read it. So I might get a call or I'm sure that the, the planning department gets that call. I'm just concerned about the five days. And I do understand what Mr. Durfee had, had mentioned about that if people are on vacation or something like that, but when they put the application through, I would hope they get notification saying, you're going to have to have someone pick this sign up within 10 days of this meeting or five days within this meeting. And it should be upon them to, to make that work. It shouldn't be that the city has to be worried that they're on vacation or that something has happened to them. And if they don't pick up the sign, then it needs to get pushed back. I also appreciate that people need to, you know, they have deadlines and so on. More importantly, I also appreciate that we are short-staffed in our planning department and, and this is also causing a problem. If this were a temporary thing, I, I'd be for it, but, and I hate to do this because I don't like going against something that our planning department has, has worked. I'm sure they vetted it and so on, but I, I really can't support it. And it's, in my ward is going to have the biggest effect and I just don't want to do that to my constituents. So thank you.
Alderman Gueva?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to support the ordinance tonight and it will sa-, A, will save a little bit of coin for the city, which I think is good. But at the same time, I think it's time we, we start mon-, really modernizing our processes and how we do things. I know I'm probably in the slim minority of people under 30 who subscribe to the Telegraph. So probably trying to get people my age to see notifications like this through the Telegraph, not the best way, but obviously social media and other means would be more helpful. So yeah, I, I, I'm okay with us scrapping this type of notification just because I feel it's time that we move into more a modern strategy of how to, how to notice the public. And I, I would like to see kind of a, a long-term plan on how we, how we plan on doing that because unfortunately it seems that newspapers aren't going to rebound anytime soon. But I'm hoping we could see a long-term strategy that would allow a more wide range and something that would more than likely be more affordable than spending close to $10,000 plus a year to put it in a newspaper that has just a very small scope of people who would actually view it. Thank you.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Tebow?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good. Alderman Camo.
Thank you, Madam President. So I agree with a lot of what the previous speakers have all said. I don't necessarily have a huge issue with removing the publication in the newspaper requirement, but I would also like to see that replaced with something else, whether that is, you know, community television or a post on the Facebook page. I know the notices are listed on the city's website. I don't feel like a lot of people know how to get to that information. You know, you can subscribe to meeting agendas and public notices and things like that, but it's not something that might be superintuitive to most people. So I, I'd like to see the newspaper requirement replaced with something else. And rather than, you know, pass this legislation tonight and then come back later with some sort of solution, it would be nice to figure out what we could replace that with and get it right the first time. I also agree with the, the signage conversation that's gone on. I, I think that having the signs out is a, is a great thing. I myself can't read what they say when I drive by, but I do see them and it kind of puts a note in the back of my mind to check the planning board agendas when I get home or bother Director Sullivan, you know, phone calls. So I think the signs are, are a good thing and I, I'd actually rather see that extended as opposed to reduced. And I agree with what a previous speaker said. If, if the developer doesn't pick the sign up in time, then we just don't put that plan on the agenda for that next meeting. It's up to them to comply with, you know, what we tell them they need to do. So it seems like, you know, a, a healthy amount of us have some more suggestions, some more conversation that we'd like to have regarding this. So rather than just vote yes or no on it, I'd like to move to re-refer it to committee.
Motion is to re-refer. Mr. Sullivan is back there with his hand, Director Sullivan is back there with his hand up. I wonder if we could allow him to speak.
Is it acceptable, Madam President?
Yes.
Just a, our request, I think, would be actually to request a tabling of the legislation. And the reason for that request would be, as you're familiar with land use code modifications and the public hearing process that happens at P E D C, a re-referral to P E D C to discuss an amendment will then trigger an additional public hearing if a substantial amendment is made at P E D C. And so it could create a situation where from a timing perspective, it actually elongates the process. And so if Corporation Counsel and the, the Board or President are, are comfortable with this, I think we would request a tabling so that an amendment could be prepared and brought back to this body and then re-referred if that would be acceptable.
Alderman Camo?
I will rescind my previous motion and make a motion to table.
Tabling is not debatable, so I will refer to the attorney because he's not going to weigh in on.
Well, on the public hearing issue, any amendment will require a public hearing. Any amendment, unless it's to insert a comma or something. But if you're going to change the five days that's in presently to 15 or 12 or 13, or if you're going to substitute for the newspaper publication, a Facebook page or community television advertisement or whatever, any of that would require another public hearing.
May I just?
Director Sullivan?
My thought, thank you, Madam President. My only thought is that a referral will put us at a November P E D C meeting where an amendment would be made or considered and then would have to be reheard in December. Whereas a tabling here and drafting of an amendment by staff brought back to the board in early November could then be referred to a mid-November P E D C meeting. And I apologize for having this strategic discussion, but from a timing perspective, I, I believe that the tabling and the re-referral may create different timelines for potential passage. So I, I defer to Corporation Counsel, obviously, but I was just thinking that one might accelerate the process potentially, but perhaps it may not.
I've got nothing to say about the scheduling. The scheduling will be more in doubt throughout than mine.
Well, the motion on the ta-, the floor is to table. I'm going to ask, all those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The ayes have it. Motion is tabled. The legislation is tabled. New business resolutions.
First reading of R dash 23 dash 168 authorizing the Business and Industrial Development Authority to enter agreements for the transfer and redevelopment of certain parcels of land owned by the city of Nausicaä.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Gueva. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee.
First reading of R dash 23 dash 169 relative to the acceptance of 90,000 from the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance into police grant activity fiscal year 2024 hazardous device unit response vehicle.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R dash 23 dash 170 relative to the acceptance of 43,117 from the United States Department of Justice into police grant activity 2023 justice assistance grant multi-jurisdictional.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Gueva, Alderman Karen, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of O dash 23 dash 064 allowing permitted overnight on-street parking on Colonial Ave.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Camo, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of O dash 23 dash 065 amending the land use code regarding fence construction adjacent to the Frederick E. Everett Turnpike.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the planning board, and schedule a public hearing at the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 29th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Period for general public comment. We have one person signed up, Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I've come out tonight to address the remarks of the aldermen at the last meeting on October 10th. And I'm particularly concerned about the comments made by Mr. Tebow. You know, he brought up the fact that a citizen put in a right-to-know request looking at the costs associated with alcohol purchase on a grant. And he said, it turned out it was, he said, this citizen has been taking all these right-to-knows with, actually wound up about some alcohol that was purchased that had to do with a right-to-know on it. It turned out to be Black Heritage Trail with Mrs. Newman at Holman Stadium. Nothing nefarious, nothing fraudulent. Nobody's drinking upstairs. The mayor doesn't have a case of champagne under his desk. No one's drunk right now. I think you know, just because someone says it in public, it's not true. I wrote a right-to-know very respectful, very respectfully. It had nothing to do with people drinking under their desk or being drunk, Derek. What you do is dress the public down who comes out here to speak by insulting them over and over again. And why this board doesn't say no to that is beyond me. You have a code of conduct. My right-to-know said that there was an expenditure for five, please provide me with the grant fund document used to credit the $514 expenditure for the New Hampshire liquor store purchase in the expenditure report up to 6/29/23. Please provide me with any records that will show what this purchase was used for and who authorized the purchase and what department it came from. Do you know why I put that in? Because Rosemary Evans, who had been calling me at home in September, contacted me and told me about that alcohol purchase. She also told me about the city using a limousine to take Mr. Cummings on a, on a travel thing. She was very concerned about how the Citizen Bank credit cards are being used by this city. She had seen the charges go way up. She thought it was out of control. The mayor was being irresponsible and Donalene Lozo would have never done that. And she recommended that Laura Calhoun put in for those expenditures and try to get as much as she could on them. And I know my documentation to the authorities and the date on that, combined with when we did this, would probably match up pretty well. And we had never, ever, myself or Laura, put in for a request on those cards. And when you diminish us and you speak like we wrote something about people being drunks, you are a disgrace. We are citizens that do, and you're laughing the whole time. You think it's hilarious.
I do.
Yeah, it's pretty, and somebody here ought to call that out because we have a right to make those requests respectfully. And the city's response to me was very respectful. They offered an explanation. They made no assumptions like Mr. Tebow. They didn't say, how dare you infer we're drunk in our offices. They treated it respectfully. And I expect you aldermen to do the same.
Time.
A pox on you, Mr. Tebow.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here tonight. Gloria? No, I mean, Alderman Timmons. Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, well, I got extra stuff to talk about, I guess. You know, for her to come in here and bring up city hall employees and drag them through the mud and bring up their names, that's disgraceful. And to constantly attack everyone here or almost every, I should say everybody but three, is disgraceful. And to not listen to us speak back to you is disgraceful. And
I only get three minutes.
The people have to know out there what she is doing to this city.
All right.
I get three minutes, Mr. Tebow. You get 10 minutes.
Go away. So the people, the citizens need to know what she's doing. And so that's my comments. And there's people in here that will not speak out against what she's doing to this city. Costing us money, going on right-to-know for $500, really think that, that we're doing something we shouldn't be doing. Why, why do you need that expense? And I, you know, I'd love to, Mr. Cummings, Director Cummings, to come up here and tell me what limo he's driving in. Love to know that. Oh, yeah, I guess, can you speak? That would be great.
May I speak, Madam President?
Director Cummings.
Yes, Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services. So to clarify some of the comments that were just made, I never took a limousine, never taken a limousine and expensed it to the, to the city of Nausicaä. What I believe what was in reference to was, I believe a limousine company had a passenger van that could accommodate eight or so city employees, I was one of them, that went down to Norwalk, Connecticut to meet with the senior staff of Norwalk to learn about best practices. And we needed to, to have a, a vehicle large enough to fit the six or eight or so directors that, that went down for a day to, to listen to a like municipality located on a river of about 100,000 population, something that, you know, New Hampshire doesn't have, have a lot of. And we wanted to, to meet with that senior personnel to hear how they handle and, and do some things. It was a, a wonderful one-day session where I think a lot of municipal employees here in the city took great value in hearing some of those best practices and how, how a like city does things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment, Director Cummings. And my other comments are about the, the meeting that, or the, so we had a committee meeting on the zoning and, or the historic district commission ordinance that was on here. It was, we had two committees part, as part of that. So there was a lot of people there. A lot of people spoke. Alderman Jettie made great comments, just same that he did tonight. And it's, it passed. And I think if we would have gone through this tonight, if we were actually gone through the votes, it would have got a yes or a no vote either way without it being, you know, everybody not knowing what they were going to do. And so I, I don't know why we would table that. But, you know, I, I think we should have voted on it. We went, we went through the committee, the committees were there. People that wanted to table it were the people that weren't there. So whatever.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to send out condolences to Dr. Boheben's passing last week. Dr. Mo was very instrumental when the Boys Club came to Nausicaä a long time ago. And he was the second longest member for the Nashville Lions Club in the city along with Al Savage, who we all know and love. So it was a very sudden passing. So I'd like them to know that we're all thinking of him. He was a jolly gentleman and did a lot for this community. Secondly, the 53rd Annual Park and Recreation Senior Outing is Sunday, November 5th at the Marriott. So I hope to see all you elderly aldermen in attendance.
And young ones too.
We always have a good time. We always have great prizes to give out and it's always a fun time. Mayor has been coming for, well, not as long as me, but long enough. So please come down and see. It's the one thing that the city's Parks and Recreation Department does. It's the one thing that the city's Parks and Recreation Department does for its senior citizens, and it's a wonderful event. They look forward to it, and I'm glad we're continuing with it. And finally.
Can you give us the time, please?
Uh, it starts at noon. And finally, for all of you out there, as you know, I'm dressed in my Sunday best. Happy Halloween.
Alderman Karen, were you referring to the June Karen outing? I thought so. Okay, just wanted to clear that up. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, just a couple of things, as a, also a lion, I want to, my condolences on the passing of Dr. Mo Heben. Second thing is, um, somewhat unrelated, but related to the discussion we had earlier. I think if we had a, when you open up the homepage on the city website, if you had a button that said, "Land Use, uh, Changes", and, and then underneath it had a by Ward, make it a one or two-click thing, and you could see anything that's going on, like if, I know that, that people call me the first day, "Green Signs Go Up", and I go, "What's that?" And, uh, if you had, could go on the website and, and click on that, go to Ward Two, you'd see what was, what all the green signs meant. That's one of the best things, other than, you know, I, I, we've been struggling for a long time with how do we notify things about what's going on in the city? The more we can do to make it easier, sometimes it's really hard to find things on the city website, and I've been on there a lot. So, uh, I think that would be one way of, of doing it, 'cause, again, um, I'm in, uh, high-tech stuff, 'cause I spent years and years in, in the high-tech industry, but normally, people, June's age. Just kidding, just kidding. We go back a long way.
Like the same amount of time?
No, but seriously, older people, uh, aren't into high-tech all the time. But young people are all high-tech. You know, and less and less newspapers. I, I also get the Union Leader, 'cause I want the Daily News, and I like to sit down and go through the newspaper. But the notices in the Union Leader are the whole state. And very often, I don't miss anything from Nashua, 'cause, you know, there's digging a ditch in Colebrook or something, and it's all on there. It, it, it gets lost in the Union Leader, so paying, for us paying for the Union Leader, I mean, how many people in Nashua get the Union Leader? That's the day, I know. That's the, uh, daily newspaper now for most people, if you want to read a hard copy newspaper. So, I, I think if we did something simple on the website, that you go in there and bang, you go right to it, would be great. 'Cause if you have to dig down, people don't like to do that.
No? Alderman, Alderman Kelly.
I was gonna talk about that, but now I don't want to. Um, I think it would be interesting, it was an interesting discussion around noticing the public, and I think in terms of the land use code, that isn't a thing that we, obviously was in front of us, but also, people say all the time, oh, I didn't know there was this happening, or that happening, or there's an election happening. So there could be an opportunity to bring in, um, a consultant who can give us some, some suggestions on the ways that we could start to move towards new technology, um, and what types of ways we could make sure that people know what's going on, 'cause it's important. Um, and my only other point was that we do not have a Board of Aldermen meeting before the election on Tuesday, November seventh. Make sure you go out and vote, uh, from six A. M. to eight P. M.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I can't help but, uh, respond to the, the comment about tabling, uh, which seems to offend Alderman Tebow every time it comes up. You know, there's, you know, we are a deliberative body. That means we're supposed to deliberate, we're supposed to, you know, think about things. We're supposed to, you know, have hearings, you know, get input from people. And, uh, you know, there's nothing that, that requires us to, you know, deal with an ordinance the same night that it's referred to a committee. There were, I thought, maybe, uh, I kind of recall, uh, during the committee meeting, you know, when I brought up a lot of these points, uh, Alderman Tebow, you said, gee, Alderman Jettie brings up a lot of points, um, I'm gonna have to think about this. So, um, you know, I think that's a good thing. I think it's good when we, when we think about things. And I, I think it's good that we, you know, uh, when a, when a committee tables something to get more information, give the Planning Department an opportunity to, to respond to the questions that I raised. You know, if you recall during that meeting, uh, you know, the Planning Department didn't have answers to all of the questions that I raised. And it would have been nice for them to have the opportunity to go back and, and, uh, and, and look at that, discuss it among themselves. So, I don't find, you know, tabling to be abhorrent. I think it's in, in the right situation. It's a good thing. And I, you know, and I would encourage us to think more and deliberate more about the ordinances that we pass. 'Cause once we pass the ordinance, it's, it's the law of the city until it's, it's changed, and it can't, and it's, and these things aren't changed that easily or that quickly. So, you know, I, I, I hope that, um, you know, I was ready to vote no tonight, and, I don't know, you, you were probably ready to vote yes, but the vote would have been, gone whichever way, but I think, I think a lot of questions were raised, and I'm glad that Alderman Como tabled it to give us the opportunity to come up with something better, to look at the problems that the Planning Department sees and see if there's some other, you know, some better ways of, of, of dealing with those problems. I for, you know, um, you know, I don't know if, I, I see that Mr. Durfee has, has left, um, I, I would like to get an answer, it doesn't have to be tonight, but I can't, when he said that, that we're spending ten thousand dollars on publishing notices in the Telegraph, I cannot believe that we are spending ten thousand dollars on, on notifying people of changes to the historic district. I just don't think there have been that many applications made to the historic district. And that's what we were dealing with tonight, is removing the publication requirement just for the historic district. That's all we were dealing with tonight. So I can't imagine that we're spending ten thousand a year on the historic district. So, I don't think we're gonna save that much money by eliminating publication about the historic district. So lastly, um, I too would like to encourage people to vote, uh, but I would like to take this opportunity to remind Ward Five voters that the polling location has changed to Nashua High South. And during the mayoral primary, a lot of people had trouble finding where the voting was, because Nashua High South is a huge, a huge campus, a huge building, and, uh, a lot of people went in the wrong door and had to walk around the building and complained about it. So, uh, the, the polling place is in the gymnasium. Uh, the city clerk has corrected the city information about where the polling location is to add the word gymnasium. And so when you drive to the high school, there's a sign that points to the gymnasium. So hopefully, that'll help people to, to find, uh, us at the, at the gymnasium at Nashua High South. And I hope everyone comes out and votes. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Um, first, as a point of personal privilege, I'd like to clarify that, um, myself at least, and I believe another speaker, were at the committee meeting, and we did bring things up. My, my idea was specifically cited by the city staff as being at least promising, which, you know, wasn't, didn't put a lot of work into that. So, I think a little bit of work in figuring out ways to outreach the public is absolutely possible, and I don't think we necessarily knew all of that, that evening that it came out. So, um, I do agree that it is definitely our prerogative, when we talk about something in a committee, to review it at the board and then re-referral it, or, in this case, table it, because re-referral might have created a timeframe crunch and we were, you know, compromising with the city staff. Um, I think it's our prerogative at the full board, I think we have, uh, not only a right, but an obligation, to make sure we aren't just doing one pass at any particular legislation. If any of us aren't attending the meeting in person, there is a reason that we're not all just continually meeting with Board of Aldermen meetings, we trust each other to do some legwork. But we also have to actually do research, and I think, um, my colleague down the table here, who commented that he had watched it, was able to articulate information from the meeting, so was obviously very aware and did his homework. So I think most of the people that publicly spoke on the ordinance either did go to the meeting or did watch the meeting, and I think that's, fulfills the role of what a committee's supposed to do. That being said, I also think that the comments directed at my colleague were unfair and not consistent with what we've seen in the past. I think demanding that people be showing you with respect while refusing to use their titles, while using your public comment to confront them and berate them, um, at least we were elected to do that, but I don't think the city staff signed up for that, and I don't think it's fair that that's continually done. And I think it is on us to stand up for city staff periodically, when people in the public, single them out for attention, that's unfair and is unkind. So I do believe in public holding staff accountable, but I also recognize that members of the public can make claims, accusations, and deliver information freely, using their freedom of speech, and without us here to correct it or to challenge it, then we are letting misinformation spread with the platform that we've provided. So I don't think it's appropriate to directly target and criticize people in a negative manner, particularly one that's inaccurate. And I do think there have been many, many, many examples of public comment, particularly by the individual, where somebody was singled out, somebody was targeted, very disrespectful things were said. And it's unfortunate that person is willing to express those things, but does not accept the same kind of response. With regards to, um, some comments that were made over the weekend about, um, a, a supposed flyer, I don't think there's any actual tangible examples of the flyer going out, that talked about how we've blown up the budget over the last couple of years. It was pointed out that some of these claims were untrue because they included adding grants into, or accounting for grants in the city, um, budget. And so I just wanted to make note of the fact that, while we did just dispose of one point eight million dollars of escrows, in this meeting alone, we also approved one point six five million dollars worth of federal grants, which is taxpayer money coming back to them, because you pay into the federal government, and what are they gonna do with it? I mean, are they gonna buy, uh, are they gonna give the, the USS Roosevelt a new paint job? Or is it gonna come back here to help us with our public health issues, or us to, or come back here to make our police officers safer? I think whenever our city departments are able to identify grant funding to achieve city projects for our taxpayers, to be spent here in our local economy, that's a very good thing. And I think that's not necessarily credited directly in terms of how much we reduced the budget, how much we expanded the budget, how much the budget impacts, uh, the overall tax burden. I think those are things that do need to be said and acknowledged periodically, because our staff work very hard, and we deliver very effective, high services, in a number of areas, because we don't just tax people and then spend their money. We have a much more complex and progressive sense of how to identify revenue to meet constituent needs. Additionally, um, I wanted to thank, uh, the mayor and the organizers of the Crop Walk. It was a great event this past Sunday. Um, I've been going for over twenty years now, um, and I understand that they're at their forty-ninth year, so, or thirty-ninth year, sorry. So if my fellow Aldermen want to join us next year, it should be a, a great celebration. Uh, it's a great opportunity to walk with your neighbors, uh, to talk about issues like poverty and homelessness that directly affect our community and are also in a larger global context. I also wanted to congratulate all the businesses that have been starting up over the past, uh, five to six weeks. It's kind of been like, one after another. Like, we know the Yoke Place right around the corner, uh, we know Coffee and Kindness, uh, opened up on, um, uh, West Pearl. Congratulations to both of them. The restaurant Pearl has also opened up, uh, they did that a few weeks ago, and I never really acknowledged it. Um, and then this Friday, um, Soul Sisters is gonna be doing their ribbon cutting over at Thirty Temple Street. Um, a very exciting business that has been doing a lot in the community over the years, um, in a space that I think a lot of us miss, because it used to be, uh, the city moose, so it's gonna be another great business opening up downtown. Um, I think, uh, we've done a great job in stimulating that particular economic area, and, um, it's great to see so many people who are able to start their small businesses, uh, successfully in Nashua. Thank you.
Alderman Clea.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, there, there's so many things here. First, I, I, I would like to, um, say that, uh, when, when we have speakers that come and, and weaponize public comment to attack someone such as, as Alderman or, um, an employee, um, it, it brings down the city. And, and I'm not trying to single any one person out, but I can tell you that I get calls all the time where someone said they, you know, I'd like, how do I speak in public? And I'd say, well, you, you come to the meeting and you do that. And, um, they have fear, true fear and anxiety of being attacked themselves if they were to, they were to speak. And I'm not saying by, that, that particular speaker, I don't mean that, but just kind of airing their, because they, they see it happening on Facebook. So, more and more things are being weaponized and so on, and, and then bombs are being dropped. So for instance, the attack on, uh, Director Cummings of, you know, him getting a limo, you know, it, it, now it's gonna go all over social media and so on, that, um, Director Cummings was, was granted a, a limo, when in fact that was nothing to the, it was something that actually benefited the city to have these department heads go down there and to be able to have this discussion and so on. So it was beneficial to the city, but it's going to get out there through social media and, and so on. So I'm really glad that, um, uh, Director Cummings was allowed to come up and, and speak against that. A- as a person who has been attacked by different speakers, whether it be on social media, whether it be here and so on, um, it, it does smart, but we are elected officials, and sometimes we can take it. To have our employees have to go through that breaks my heart. And we've seen it for five years now. Um, it, it goes from one department to another department. When something gets old, we go to, to something else, and we do an attack on, on someone else. I'm gonna kind of leave it that way. Um, and, and to the comment about, um, we should have taken care of something in committee, I can honestly say that I, I was at that one, and I did speak up, and I did say, have my reservations, but I was not a member of that. I would have asked for it to be tabled at that point, but not being a member of that committee, I don't have that right to do that. Um, I can just ask my, my questions and so on. So, while I know that that was a, a perfectly legitimate comment and not meant to attack in any way, I could not vote on that one. I do think there are so many different things that could be done, you know, the Nashville Patch, the, the Hippo, you know, CTV, not everybody has comment, uh, Comcast, not everybody gets the newspapers, but if we can hit enough places, maybe we can kind of I, I do a, a big thing, um, to that one there. So, um, I, I do think that we do deliberate, um, here. I think we deliberate in the, in the committees and so on. So, again, I, I, I don't like the, the fact that any kind of judgment was being made that way. I do want to talk to the, the hundred million dollar tax increase. For those, I, I sent out a very, very detailed a message to my, um, to, to many of my, my constituents, as well as I know that there were some people that shared it on Facebook, Facebook, and it was an attack and saying, well, didn't we go up this way? Well, if you really look at the numbers, seventy-seven million dollars was added to the budget, and that was for the, the grant money under the appropriations, I believe that I'm saying that properly. Um, and a- as such, it was never a hundred million dollars anyways, it was, I think, like, a ninety-two million dollar increase. Seventy-seven million dollars of that being the appropriation for grants, twenty-six and, I wanna say, uh, twenty-five and, and fifty-six, I think, or something of that nature, million dollars. Some of, some of it was put as appropriation to the school district, some was put as appropriation to the city. And as was pointed out, today alone, we did like one point seven million dollars in grants. Not all those grants, um, require matching funds, but because of the spending cap that was put in by a, a certain senator and the entire state, the entire four hundred, um, state reps got to vote on what happens in Nashville, which truly broke my heart, uh, because it didn't affect them, it only affected here. Um, so whether you like it or not, the spending cap meant we could not go a certain percentage over the previous years. And some people go, yeah, I agree with that, but what they don't realize is that these grants, which are free money, and I think it was pointed out, yes, it is free money. So some people say, well, my, I'm paying in my taxes. Well, you're right, but you're still gonna pay it into your taxes, and then it will go to another community, it'll go to another state. And do we really want that? If it's something that we can get here, it affects our police, it affects our fire, it affects Health and Human Services, it affects public works, it affects every single department within the city. Um, and if we weren't able to spend this because of the spending cap, we would have to increase taxes, we'd have to do something else to that. So we don't want to do that. Anytime we can save money through grants and so on, um, I think we should, we should do that. And I just want to- And I just want to kind of remind everybody that the League of Women Voters have been having their forums, the next one will be for the Board of Ed this Thursday, and that will be at the Nashua Public Library. There'll be one last one, and that would be the mayoral forum, and I believe that is going to be at Nashua South, if I've got that properly. And that's the Thursday before the election. I think we, we all deserve the right to be listening to what the candidates say, regardless of what team you're in. I have who I prefer, but, you know, you have to make your own decisions and so on, but, and I really wish that things weren't taken out of context, whether it be from there or from something that's happened here, or somebody looks at a piece of paper and says, oh, limo, and now I'm going to announce this to the world. I wish we, we as a city would stop weaponizing some of the words that were said and take them out of context where it's going to show up on social media, and we have fear of good citizens who want to come here and comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. A few things on the ordinance tonight getting tabled. I think, I think it's important that we hit the pause button on that and relook at it. A few weeks ago, maybe two, we stood and talked about affordable housing, and I think one of the things that are going to be facing cities all across the country that not a lot of people talk about is going to be land use and rezoning, because the way cities are put together now and the way they were originally planned is going to change. And one thing that's consistent that I think we can all agree on is that people hate change. One thing I know that they hate worse is when things change and then they don't know about it. So I think getting the ordinance right so we can fill that box with something that's going to increase awareness of what's going to happen in the city, I think is a good thing. And to hit the pause button and to get it right, I think, is good. Congratulations, a lot of promotions happened at Nashua Fire and Rescue over the weekend. Particularly, I wanted to congratulate now Assistant Chief Mark Cooley on his promotion, and I wanted to wish William Atkinson a good retirement. I think that's great. I, I've known Mark and his wife Kelly for a long time, and they're great Nashuans, and I was really happy to see that happen and have that come due for him. Also, Alderman Dowd, I'm going to get you on this one. Friday, 1:30, I can't believe you didn't mention this, the Franklin Street School dedication. So that's at 1:30. Going to cut, oh, are we going to cut the ribbon or put a shovel in the ground, or we don't?
No, we're not digging up the street that was just.
So that's Friday at 1:30. And that's all I got. Thanks.
No more shovels.
Just the plaque.
It's a giant pencil.
You all sit.
Well, I'm going to save you all and say nothing.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to add to Mr. Cummings' explanation of the van. I think the cost, my recollection, was less than 500. I think it was more, I think it was less than 200. But it was no limo, I can tell you that, because my back hurt for a few days after we rode in that thing. Now, one of the other purposes is that Norwalk has an auditorium, which was built as a WPA project, very similar to the KEF. So, and they've made some changes there, and I know, of course, we are, need to make a decision down the road about the KEF itself, and it was helpful just to be able to see, you know, how they have, there were, there were some improvements made, but a long time ago, 20 or 30 years ago, I would guess. But it was just interesting to see what, what they had done to it. So that was another reason for the, for the trip. But my back recovered after a few days, and I wish we had taken a limousine, but it was only a van.
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien.
Tomorrow night, being, excuse me, October 25th, there'll be, Infrastructure Committee will be meeting right here at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
Alderman Timmons.
Okay, Madam President, the Culture Connection Committee is meeting tomorrow at 12 o'clock, and hopefully, my mouth wouldn't be so bad, I'm getting too poor, I might have to have Mr. Alderman go past the tent tomorrow. If I can't make it, I'm not sure I'm still be okay to attend, so I'm going to the dinners.
I'll just use Alderman Como's.
Going to the dinners tomorrow, so. Oh, and that's at 12 o'clock here, the City Hall.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Madam President, I would like to make the motion that the October 24th, 2023 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned at 9:06 p.m. Thank you, everyone.